Well, it 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 went, didn't even go to municipal services first, it went to uh, planning and zoning first.
Planning and zoning first.
I'm going to convene the meeting for September seventh, twenty twenty one, please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is that the United States of America, to be followed for which it stands.
Stand.
We have the roll, please.
Belzak?
Here.
Clistick?
Here.
Gustafson? Kenny?
Here.
Shower?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Vaughn?
Here.
Six present and one absent.
We have a quorum, uh, takes us to questions and comments and announcements of a general nature, this, these are comments that a resident might want to bring forward that have nothing to do with our agenda tonight, or it could be with something that's on our agenda tonight. So, at this time, I will give three minutes to anyone who wants to address the console on any issue. Yes, sir, please come forward.
My name's Ken Vasowski, and I'd like to address the retention pond problems at, uh, Waterfall Glen and the condos. Now, um, I'm the only townhouse on the retention pond by the condos and, uh, hotel. That's where all the water runs towards us, and then goes out along the forest preserve. So, there's four units, we all four units have basements. Now, the, nobody seems to be concerned about the water table in our basements. Uh, two of the basements are finished. Twice this year, we've had rain of four inches, and it brought the water up to our trees, uh, the townhouses. My some pump pit sounds like I have a water faucet on. The water table is elevated as the pond goes up. Takes two to three days for the water to go down. I check the pond drain before and sometimes during the storm. I keep it clean and it keeps draining. I don't think we have room for another building to be draining water into our pond. It's not really our pond, my pond, but to the hotel pond and the condo pond. And I don't, the townhouse association's really not too worried about us, we're sort of by ourselves. When the condos don't have much to say, the townha- houses don't have much to say. I hope when this new building that's going up, I hope we aren't relying on a twenty-year-old survey. I think we could have a survey checking out the water retention and maybe that water retention is full. And I have one other question I'd like to know. Who's gonna do my job of cleaning that sewer when I can't pull that sewer cover anymore? The condos don't really want, wanted or accept it, and the townhouses don't really want to accept it. Nobody says for sure who sewer it belongs. Who has responsibility for that sewer? And then the next question I have, that line runs all the way down to Forest Preserve to the bike path. Who's in charge of that, the rest of the sewers? I would like to find out who really has authority on that sewer.
Sir, my question is, you mentioned that the water comes up to your trees.
Yes.
Uh, have you ever had water in your basement?
Not yet, I've been doing it, I've been living there for twenty years.
Okay, I'm happy to hear that you haven't had water in your basement.
Uh, that,
With regard?
The pond, may I say, the pond is supposed to be a holding pond. The sewer has a plug in it, a reducer. That little hole sucks up a lot of leaves and stuff, and it's constantly getting plugged. You have to go there with a rake and clean it up.
You know, you're, you're in a situation that so many of us are in, and that is, we've taken the personal responsibility of cleaning out sewers in front of our homes. I've done that with leaves from mine, I know a lot of other people do the same thing, and believe me, I appreciate the fact that you do what you do in terms of cleaning that out. You've, you've helped yourself and you probably have helped others. I guess my question would be, is there no homeowners association responsibility for the situation you have?
I don't know who would, if, I've had a couple people from the condos help at times, but if I go on vacation and somebody else goes on vacation from the condo, there's nobody to really accept responsibility for cleaning that sewer up if it rains.
Sir, may I ask a question? Who, who plows the snow for you in the wintertime?
The landscaper.
The landscaping company does that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Dan?
Mr. Mayor, this is such an important, uh, issue and question, we did have a meeting with the president, Dorothy, uh, with the condo association. The restrictor that you have in place was exactly what I was referring to earlier. It's an older type of restrictor system since, uh, they've been modified, and we, the city, through the developer, uh, will be replacing that restrictor with a different type, where basically, in a nutshell, it's a riser pipe, and there's an inlet on the bottom with holes all around it, so it's almost a type of venturi effect where water is constantly cleaning that. So that's gonna be addressed, uh, just for information, I felt that was something very important, so you can go on vacation, not have to worry about anything at all. And we just found this out recently through a meeting we had with the, uh, association, the townhome, uh, representative, as well as the condo representatives. So we are addressing that for you.
And has either one assumed responsibility for that?
Response, responsibility on maintenance falls back to the association. The association eventually, or ultimately, the homeowners. Okay, and again, we went through what the condos, what the townhomes should be looking, uh, at. So I would suggest that you would maybe contact your homeowners association representatives, uh, because we had a very detailed meeting in, in respect to, uh, the flow routes, the responsibilities, potential maintenance, uh, issues, and/or preventive maintenance programs.
So, how much water can you hold in that pond? Can I, that pond's gonna have to drain faster.
I'll tell you what, let me give you my-
We're gonna be pumping water in from that, the new building that's going up.
Right, I can't give you those answers off the top of my head. If you would like to, give me a call tomorrow, we can, uh, you can come into the city hall, we'll show you the plans, and we'll go over all the items we went over with, with the association representatives.
I would appreciate that.
Okay.
Mary?
Can I ask a question? So, you're talking about the association being responsible for the condominium building that currently exists in the townhome community. Will then the management company for the Darien Heights development also be a third party to this?
Correct.
Okay, so you got three different groups responsible for managing this detention retention pad.
There's three separate, and there's three separate detention facilities. Uh, one is for the development itself.
Yep.
The second one is for the condos.
Mm-hmm.
The third one is for the townhomes.
Okay.
So they all have assigned responsibility through the Platts.
Okay, and, and who polices this? Who, like, makes sure that they're doing their due diligence?
Either A, a resident, like this gentleman himself, will give us a call and say, my pond, the pond's not draining, something's going on.
Uh-huh.
In that case, we'll go out there and take a look at it, determine the cause, we'll even go and attempt to, uh, fix it, or, you know, when I say fix it within reason, and then we'll call the association or the representative for the homeowners association and let them know that they are in violation of stormwater ordinance, in which case they're not currently maintaining it. Um, you know, again, we've been in situations where we've pumped out detention facilities because, let's face it, residents in many cases don't know what to do, and those are homeowners associations that aren't active. So, you know, we have means and ways to find out who the property belongs to, who is the responsible party, and what needs to be done.
Thank you.
Let me go grab a business card and, uh, I'll be right back, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Or do you, if you want to wait till we, the item, is this regarding the apartments? Do you want to wait till we hit that item, or would, okay, thank you. All right, uh, that would take us to approval of the minutes for August sixteenth, twenty twenty one. Motion to approve. Alderman Vaughn, seconded by Alderman Kenny. Any questions or comments regarding the minutes? If none, the roll.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Clistick?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
The minutes have been approved, it takes us to receiving of communications. Do any of the aldermen have communications from residents that they'd like to share? Alderman Kenny, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, good evening, I've got a communication from Thomas Hines, fifteen hundred block of Canterbury Courts, and regarding to the, the garbage contract that's sitting out, he wants to, um, that wants the, the city of Darien to continue on with the sticker program.
Anyone else? Alderman Clistack?
Uh, thank you, ma- thank you, Mayor, I received a communication from, uh, Drew Kelly with concerns of, uh, the noise from, from Q bar, and just wanting me to reach out if any other elder person would be interested, uh, looking at the ordinance, uh, any adjustments, any changes that they feel that, uh, could be tuned or addressed, uh, going forward, so. I'd be willing for any committee to look at it, uh, if there's no changes needed, then there's no changes needed, and that's fair enough. But I think it's just fair for residents to say, we did our due diligence diligently, and just looked at it, so.
Thank you, anyone else, any other alderman? If none, that takes us to the mayor's report, the first item on our mayor's report is consideration of a motion to advise and consent the appointment of Heather Conroy to the environmental committee. Motion to approve. Alderwoman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Belzak, any questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistick?
I'm staying.
Kenny?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Five ayes, one abstention, one absent.
Heather, do you want to come forward?
Hello?
Up, up here, Heather.
I'm going to swear you in, so please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I have that camera.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of environmental committee according to the best of my ability. Congratulations, could you please sign this, even though the name is there? You can sign underneath, it's okay. Thank you.
Heather, can I get you to turn around and just take a picture? And make it Mayor Joe, and, great. Thank you, honey.
Congratulations, Heather. Heather, uh, Heather has a real deep, uh, concern for environmental needs. Uh, I know her through Rotary, I know her through the Women's Club, and I think she's gonna be excellent, excellent person on our environmental committee. Our next, uh, item is a mayor proclamation, as most of you know, this coming weekend, Saturday, the eleventh, is the, uh, twenty, twentieth commemoration of the, uh, nine eleven incident. Whereas the city of Darien and its residents join with our fellow Americans across the nation in honoring and remembering those who lost their lives in the horrific terrorist attacks on September eleventh, twenty oh one, and whereas we continue to offer support to the families and friends who lost loved ones in the devastating events of this day, and especially our firefighters, police, and first responders who continue to step forward and serve our communities with dedication and vigilance, and whereas we commend the firefighters, police, and first responders who courageously risked their lives to rescue those in need, as well as the ordinary citizens and volunteers who selflessly gave their lives to aid their friends and coworkers who were injured or trapped in the Twin Towers and Pentagon. And whereas the events of September eleventh, twenty oh one tested the strength and resolve of our country, they also reminded us of the values set out by our forefathers, who saw a vision for the United States that we would live and be free of tyrannical rule. And whereas today, we are even more determined than ever that we will not give in to terrorism and threats to the safety and security of the United States, and whereas the United States is unified in our purpose to prevent further tragedies like those experienced on September eleventh, twenty oh one, and it is right to honor the men and women of our armed forces who had fought tirelessly to give us safe and, to keep us safe from further attacks on U.S. soil. And whereas today, we remember the lives that were lost, honor the heroic actions taken by our first responders, and thank the members of our military for their continued service and sacrifice. And whereas September eleventh will never, and should never, be just another day in the hearts and minds of all people of the United States. Now therefore, I, Joseph A. Marques, mayor of the city of Darien, do hereby proclaim the month of September, twenty twenty one, as Darien remembers a nine eleven month in the city of Darien, and call upon our residents to take time during this month to remember those who have lost their lives in this tragedy, and to pay tribute to the men and women who make up our first responders, giving thanks for the sacrifices they make daily to keep our cities safe. Uh, and I'd just like to remind people that this entire month, as I stated here, we're dedicating it to not just those who lost their lives in nine eleven, but those who lost their lives as a result of nine eleven, as well as those who continue to serve us. As many of you might know, this coming Friday, we will be honoring seven individuals who lost their lives from Darien, Connecticut, which is our sister city, and that will take place Friday at one o'clock in the Darien Community Park. Saturday morning, we will have our first responders parade, this is a very solemn parade, this is not a bells and whistles and throwing candy to the children, this is a very solemn parade, where hopefully, our thoughts will be with those first responders who continue to serve us. Saturday afternoon, at noon, we will have a community picnic at the community park. We will have, uh, several speeches, as well as artwork by our students from our local school. Our historical society and our scouts will also be there, and the Darien Lions Club will be providing food for those who, uh, wish to have something to eat. Sunday morning, we will have our Darien Dash, starting at the Darien Swim and Rec Club, and also ending at the Darien Swim and Rec Club. And Sunday afternoon, at Carriage Greens Country Club, we will have a concert starting at two o'clock. We'll have the Cass Junior High Band that will be playing first, we'll have an interlude of just music, and then at uh, three o'clock, the one hundred and forty-fourth Army Band, which is made up of National Guardsmen throughout the state of Illinois, they will be entertaining us from three to four P.M. And we'll also have, uh, a food truck there for those who want to have food. On Friday, September seventeenth, Hinsdale South plays Hinsdale Central at Hinsdale South, and we will have a commemorative ceremony that evening at that football game. So these are the events of that month, and you also might notice that we will be putting up banners on our live posts saying, the city of Darien remembers nine eleven, and I really hope, this is an educational experience. Those of us who were alive back then, I'm sure we will never forget that day. My goal as a former educator is to make sure that young people who are too young or weren't even born yet can walk away from this with a better awareness of what occurred that day and why we are the country that we are today. So, uh, it's my hope that this becomes an educational experience for all of us. With that, I'll ask for the city clerk's report, Joanne?
No report this evening, thank you.
The city administrator's report?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, just one item during the, uh, workshop, I just wanted to clarify that, I was able to look at, at the records here, or the minutes. Alderman, uh, let's see here. I think it was on February, it didn't come through here, but it was on February sixteenth, Alderman Gusterson asked if the city council would look at the Steak and Shake site, and it was on the sixteenth, he asked if that could be done at the next meeting. So that was put on the agenda for a council to vote at the next meeting, there was no, he didn't bring it up and then voted the same night like you thought, Tom. He brought it up, the city council, uh, then, at the subsequent meeting, had the opportunity to vote on the issue, just wanted to clarify.
So he just asked just for if anyone was interested in looking at the further, so.
It's, it, looking at something further, and so then, since he couldn't do it that night, it was, it was put off to a following meeting for the council to vote, yes.
So for me, it'd be properly to ask if anyone would be interested in looking at the noise ordinance? So it sounds like no, no one else is interested, so.
Just, just to clarify what was said before, that's all.
Okay, yeah, if anyone is interested in looking at the noise ordinance in the future.
Lester?
I wouldn't mind, I mean, since we've had so many recent, uh, issues with the noise, I mean, it wouldn't hurt to look at it, I mean, we don't have to change it, but it wouldn't hurt to look at it to see if we need to amend it, but, yeah.
I, I mean, you, you heard what I had to say before, and I'm not saying this, uh, in defense of the current code. I'm not, and I'm not saying in deference to Alderman, uh, Clistack or his concern. What I'm saying is, anytime you grapple with an issue like this, you have to be extremely careful that you don't legislate yourself into a position where you start losing things more than you gain by it, okay? If this council does decide that they want to explore it, that's fine with me, you're, that is your call. But at the same time, I want you to be reminded that, and Alderman Shower, if he was, I wish he was here, I know he's on the phone. We spent a year on the SUVs and the snowmobiles in the driveway because of all the information we took in from people. And in the end, there were people that still weren't totally happy with that, although I think we made the best decision. Ted, you want to say something about that?
Yeah, yeah, Joe, ju- just to piggyback off that, and sorry if I sound pretty bad, but the, the situation, and you're a hundred percent correct, when it came to the situation with the RVs, we tried to make sure, we tried to make everybody happy and, and do what we could, and in the end, we probably ended up making more people unhappy. No matter what you change, you're gonna have a group that's gonna say, this is wrong. No matter what, you're gonna make one group happy, you're gonna make another group not happy. So, it, it's one of those situations that, I understand where, you know, Alderman Clistick is coming from, and I, and I, I can appreciate it, but we're, you're just gonna have that situation, same situation to happen at this point, at least, that's what I feel, so.
Brian?
Mayor, just one, I, I think the issue with the sound ordinance is probably, uh, the city council getting a better understanding of what we have now. I, I think that, you know, that, that's really a, a, a first step, uh, for, for the city council to say, staff, go review it and change it. I would like some direction or some idea of maybe, you know, what, what the council's looking at. Um, but I, I think at this point, you know, it's educating the council on what, what our noise ordinances are, as Alderwoman Sullivan mentioned, but we actually have three or four, if I'm not mistaken, in different parts of the code. And, um, I think Mary, or Alderwoman Sullivan, I think, had a copy because there was a request for the copy, and she got that, but certainly, um, for the city council to understand what we have is, is good. However, the city council wants us to, to, you know, get that information out, we can do that. Then, then I think, once you see that, you, you could decide if, if this summer, it, it, you know, these complaints on Q, um, are something worth changing the ordinance, or you'll have a better idea because you've educated yourselves, that's all.
Alderman Kenny?
I think the one unfortunate thing that has happened to this council is that we've lost the one tool in our toolbox, is goal setting. Due to, due to COVID, we've not been able to have a true goal-setting session. So, in the past, these issues would come up, and we would, we would, at September, Brian would send out a letter, hey, what are the things you would like to talk about at goal-setting in October, and we, we'd work these things out. I think that if we don't go back to some type of goal-setting in the future, and we wait for whatever that new hot button is that gets reported in, you know, in the patch, no due respect to Dave sitting in our audience tonight, or something that comes up on Nextdoor, or Facebook, whatever the case may be, we're gonna start legislating based on what we're seeing on social media, and I think that's unfortunate, and I'm hoping that we can get back to goal-setting, and we can take these items on, on a yearly basis and, and assess them before we run staff, you know, it'd cost dollars to our staff to, you know, check these things out. That's just, that's just my opinion.
Um, I didn't mean to interrupt you. We have been planning to have a goal-setting session in late October, early November. It's our intention, I already have a few ideas I'd like to see on that. We were just talking to, with Alderman, Alderwoman Sullivan tonight at her committee, with Alderman Vaughn, that we will send something out with regard to possible dates, we'll let you guys pick the dates that are most convenient.
I anticipated, but I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, you know, just,
I know.
You know, alluding to what, I think, one of our, our, our issues here is why we're starting to see different things come up, because we haven't been able to have a typical goal-setting.
Well, we didn't have one last year because of COVID, but we are gonna have one this year. That, that, that's a given.
And I don't think it's just social media, we had residents actually come in, one, one was a cardiologist nurse that can't sleep, right? So, I look at it, I go, what's more, more important, our residence, a nice place to live, or the bar, right? And for me, I think the residents take a priority. Yeah, I, I like Q bar, it's an amazing place, right? I, I've been there, I've had drinks there, I think it's great music, but when, you know, a cardiologist comes in, a mom comes in, right? It's not social media, that's a resident got off their rear end, were so fed up, they came in here and talked to us, a couple of them, so. You know, I would say it's not social media, sorry. It's unreckoned.
Anything else? Tom?
I would just agree with Alderman Kenny, I think this makes more sense to be done in goal-setting. We're not in a rush to do anything at this point, the music's over outside for the, the summer, just, i- i- if, if Q bar wanted to do music again next year, they're gonna have to come to us and get permission. Uh, I, I don't know if, I don't know if our code is broke, I guess. I mean, if they were too loud and they got fined, it seems like it's working pretty well, like it's supposed to be working. Um, let's, let's see how it goes, and let's talk about it in goal-setting.
And, and I have no problem with that, but as I said, I think, I think Brian made a good point. If we, if it comes up at goal-setting, and, and each of you has a copy of the current code, and you have some time to look at, we can raise questions as to what is working, what might not be working, where you might want to fine-tune it, and that's fine. But again, my, my caution is, let's look at all the possibilities about how any change might have a negative impact. Mary?
Yeah, I just, once again, just, I have had a copy of the code, so I've been able to read through it. I have had completely unrelated to businesses repeated in the last two summers of residential complaints because of pool parties and whatnot, um, having nothing to do with, you know, and so it was just an awareness for me to know what the code is, provide my residents with the knowledge of what the code is, what their rights are. So, you know, I think it's just an education point before we, like you said, create more red tape, and it, but if, if that is warranted, I'm all for having things go to committee for review, but let's educate ourselves first. We did tonight, Lester and I, in our admin finance committee, with, um, Mike Quorm was present, uh, you know, Mayor Marques and Brian, and then the auditor came, we, we talked about, you know, obviously, the eagerness on our part to get goal-setting back on, and that's already, um, the intention and the plan, and this will give us an opportunity, I'm sure that'll probably be at the top of your list, Tom, when we get to say, what are our priorities for goal-setting? But let's get the ordinance and- But let's get the ordinance in everyone's hands and the familiarity beforehand so that we can, you know, educate ourselves and know what we're dealing with.
And I think you really need to give some thought to any items that you think would have a long-term impact on the city, and, you know, goal-setting helps us set the agenda when we create our budget for the next year. So your input is really critical, but as I said to Mary and to Lester in our Audit and Administrative Finance Committee meeting tonight, it's always our, it's been our intention to have a goal-setting session this year.
I'll send something out next week, early next week.
Okay. All right. Department had information and questions. Any questions for Chief Thomas? I know we asked some earlier. Anything for the chief? Chief Thomas, I just wanted to let you know that last week I had an opportunity to emcee the DuPage Mares and Managers Conference Golf Outing, and I had a lot of your fellow coworkers from Aurora who wanted to let me know that they said hello and that they were very happy that you're in such a great city like Darien.
It's a plug for Darien.
Any questions for Dan? Okay, if none, then Michael, Treasurers Report, warrant number 212209.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 212209 in the amount of $336,372.92 from the listed funds. Payroll for the period ended August 26 in the amount of $272,391.34, for a total to be approved of $608,764.26.
I have a motion to approve. Alderwoman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Clistak?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
Warrant's been approved, and I think you're going to give us the monthly report for July.
Yes, in your packet, you do have the three monthly reports for May, June, and July, and I'll just do the summary as of July 31st for the first quarter. This evening, as the mayor mentioned, we had our meeting reviewing the draft financial statements with the audit report, so these numbers are solid now as far as beginning balances, and the auditors will be coming into a presentation before the city council at the October 4 meeting, so you'll get a chance to go over that. But these are internal financial statements for the first three months. General fund reflects year-to-date revenue of $5,315,645, expenditures of $3,774,620, for a fund balance of $5,902,487. Water fund, year-to-date revenue of $1,152,200, expenditures of $821,791, current balance of $3,933,371. Motor fuel tax fund, year-to-date revenue $462,35, expenditures of $1,109,977, for current balance of $718,381. Water depreciation fund, year-to-date revenue of $571, expenditures of $49,967, for current balance of $3,45,973. And the capital improvement fund, year-to-date revenue of $118,268, expenditures of $625,957, for current balance of $7,706,697.
Any questions for Mike? Thank you, Michael. Standing Committee reports? Standing the Alderman, Alderwoman Sullivan?
Thank you, Mayor. As indicated earlier tonight, we did have an Administrative Finance Committee meeting tonight. Our next one is scheduled for Monday, October 4. At tonight's meeting, we did have our auditor in, providing us with the preliminary report, and he will be coming in front of city council on Monday, October 4. And I just want to do a special shout-out to our entire city staff for all their help in preparing the audit, providing the information and all the resources. Last year, they had an extra challenge of the entire report, the entire audit being done remote. This year, there was some in person, but it was done primarily remote, and that just adds on a lot more time and effort, and special thanks to Julie Signs for all her help city staffer in helping coordinate that. And the Economic Development Committee was canceled this past week, and will be back on October 7 at 7:00 p.m. in council chambers.
Thank you, Mary. Alderman Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Police Committee meeting is next scheduled for Monday, September 20 at 6:00 p.m. across the parking lot in the police training room, pending agenda items.
Thank you. Alderman Belzak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next Municipal Services Committee meeting will be on Monday, September 27 at 7:00 p.m. in council chambers.
Thank you. That takes us to questions and comments, agenda-related. Does anyone have anything they'd like to present to the council at this time? We'll entertain those questions. Please come forward, and just state your name.
Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Wally Wright, and I'm the president of the Preserves of Waterfall Glen Townhome Association and a Darien resident for the past 44 years. You should be aware that our association board of directors has been very pleased with the professionalism of the city staff in working with us during the process of the proposed Darien Heights project. My second point, as the city council considers final approval of the project, you should be aware that on behalf of the vast majority of our residents, we continue to oppose this project on the basis that the petition is seeking variances enabling it to become too dense and too big for the available space. Further, the developers' marketing plan places too much reliance on a demographic group of young mobile professionals who will be able to find more attractive rental options elsewhere. The project adjacent to the road noise of I-55 and with no prospect of a noise well being built in the foreseeable future, this project will be severely hampered to become financially viable, and that is our sole concern. Finally, and for the record, at the May 3 city council meeting, there were a couple disappointing comments implied about our community. Those comments were just unfair. You'll note the objections to the project from the leaders of that community, of our community, focused on the points I made just a minute ago. The objections presented to our committee, the objections presented by our community leaders had nothing to do with race or class. Our position, however, was reflective of the opinions of the vast majority of our residents. We have a very welcoming and diverse community, and again, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Wally. Anyone else? It takes us to old, oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Juliana, do you have something? Oh, okay. Takes us to old business, there being none, takes us to the consent agenda, there being no consent agenda, takes us to new business. We have one item. Item A, consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance granting final PUD and final plat of consolidation approval for Darien Heights 2305 Sokol Court and 2345 South Frontage Road. Motion to approve. Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Discussion. Mary?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you again to the residents that have continued to stay engaged in this topic, also to our city staff who I know has taken extra efforts to answer questions, have meetings, go on-site, get all the information they can to the residents and address their concerns. So I know we had a little conversation earlier when Resident Tim talked about the retention pond and basin. I just want to make sure, I'm referencing a memo that was given to the Townhome Association by city planner Jordan Yankee on August 18, where he addressed some questions that they had, and I just want to make sure I'm clear on the stormwater and the ponds and that, you know, obviously, we had some very significant rains this summer that we hope, all of us hope everywhere in Darien and all of, you know, Illinois, that that doesn't happen again, but I guess I'm trying to make sure that, what's the level of confidence that, you know, what will be developed will be able to, the stormwater, the flow, the ponds, the impervious land, all that, all those buzzwords will be handled and be facilitated?
I'm fully confident, especially, you know, and again, part of reasoning from that is, if you recall back in the early 80s, when all the rain started really to come into the suburban areas, rural areas, that's when detention really started kicking. DuPage County Stormwater Ordinance started kicking in the 80s, and today's detention requirements are so stringent that there will be less water that flows on sheaf flow, on land in other words, than flows today.
Because the Darien Heights development is providing its own detention area, correct? Just?
That is correct. They're providing, they're actually sharing it with the condos, but due to the impervious expansion, I don't know what's the expansion, but he needs to have additional detention, in which case he has to suffice for that by putting it on his property first.
Right, because when the areas were developed with the detention, it was counting for the future development of that Sokol Court area to be only 50% impervious, and this exceeds that?
It exceeds it, yes, slightly, yes.
Okay, so that's why this additional detention is being provided by Darien Heights development.
That is correct.
And I guess just one other point of clarification. So what's being voted on tonight is the final PUD, correct? Because city council, it's already gone through committee once for approval of the development. This is just to approve the final PUD?
Along with the plat, that's correct.
Right, because all the other things have already been approved.
Dan, I'm sorry, could you, so again, just to clarify, tonight, the final plans, the council's voting that the final plans meet the preliminary approval?
That is correct.
Right, yes, okay.
Anyone else? Alderman Clisak?
Thanks, Mayor. I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I did have an opportunity this past week to stop by at Farmingdale Apartments that are in my ward. They're four-story apartment buildings, and they're at 96% capacity. Studio apartments stop at $1,100, going up to $2,200, $2,300. That's more than the mortgage, and so the concerns that were brought forward, I don't find, at least in my ward, are very valid. Someone mentioned that they come in and move out. I have the property manager, Sandy, mentioned she has residents from the 80s living in Farmingdale Apartments in my ward. Some people do not want to own, and that's fine, and so I haven't had any issues, and so I'm fine with what it is. I mean, if you don't have this, you're going to get like a warehouse or a gas station there. I mean, it's just the reality of it is being right there, and so I think this is the best addition we have for Darien.
Anyone else? Alderman Vaughn, Alderman Kenny?
No, I've got nothing to say.
Alderman Shower, anything?
No, no, Mr. Mayor, sorry.
All right, if there's no more further questions, we have the roll.
Kenny?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Clistak?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
The motion has been approved. It takes us to questions, comments, announcements of a general nature. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share of a general nature with the council? Alderman Clisak?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind residents, we have Darien Dash coming up. It is a one-mile race, so you can just walk, so I got my family members involved in that as well, so it's a great event, been part of it for many years, so if you can come out Sunday morning and support, it'd be greatly appreciated.
And I'd just like to reiterate that I'd like to see people come out this weekend. Again, I think the Friday ceremony, where we're going to be honoring the lives of seven people from Darien, Connecticut, who passed away, is, I think it's a very nice tribute to those individuals, even though they weren't from our town, they're from our sister city. And there's one other thing I'd like to mention. I was asked to do a proclamation tonight for childhood cancer. September is normally Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and I promised the people who made the request for the proclamation that I would remind the residents that September is indeed Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and we should all give some thought to that. So, thank you. Mary?
And just once again, piggybacking all the events that are centered around the 9/11 20-year anniversary this weekend, from the Dash to the picnic to the parade. I have three children, two of which were born and were alive, and recall what happened on 9/11. We all know where we were and what we were doing, and I have one child that wasn't. He came after that, and I think it's so, you know, there's a lot of specials on TV, NBC, Netflix, because it is the 20-year anniversary, but here we have an opportunity in our own backyard to remember that day and be together and share stories, and I think we should try to take full advantage of doing that in person in our own community this weekend.
Thank you, Mayor. If nothing else, motion to adjourn. Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Belzak. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
At 8:15. Thank you.